The times when I've been on these things, people, people are very shy about. But they'll, they'll, they'll ask questions via chat.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah.
Wait a second. Let's give it. People are gonna start coming quick now. There we go. Everybody, we're gonna give it a couple more minutes and then we'll just get started. Hi Robbie.
Hi Mar.
Hi.
Hi Grant.
Hello.
Hi Jack.
We'll just give it one more minute and then we'll get started. It's seven oh three, so should we go ahead and get the ball rolling and we'll keep letting people in as they arrive? So, welcome everyone. My name is Joanna Paris Kavathlis. I am the co-founder and executive director of Action Tank. Action Tank is a think tank that partners with artists to research and promote new public policy solutions in the, at the local government level and we're based in Cincinnati, Ohio. And this is the third session of our city council night school program. Uh, we are incredibly lucky to have a former council member Kevin Flynn and local author Annette Wick. Um, I will hand it over to Hillie now who will introduce them. Um, and I'm gonna mute myself because I have a four-year-old running around my, in my room.
Hi everyone. So, I'm gonna start by introducing Kevin Flynn, who probably needs no introduction in this city. Kevin Flynn is a graduate of the University of Cincinnati and the University of Cincinnati College of Law. Kevin recently retired from the active practice of law after serving as a partner and of counsel with the law firm of Griffin Fletcher and Herndon LLP. And recently retired as an adjunct professor at the University of Cincinnati, both at the College of Law for 27 years and the Linder College of Business for three years. Kevin completed his service on Cincinnati City Council on January 2nd, 2018. Kevin chaired the Rules and Audit Committee and was vice chair of the Law and Public Security Committee and a member of the Budget and Finance Neighborhoods and Transportation Committees. Kevin is a true Cincinnatian, living in Mount Airy where he grew up, attending Little Flower Grade School. As did 24 other members of his family, as did my dad, by the way, and LaSalle High School. Kevin is married to his terrific wife Peggy Flynn and they are the parents of three wonderful children, Kevin, Shannon, and Colleen. Kevin was in a life-changing auto accident almost 19 years ago and lives his life with quadriplegia. Sorry. Kevin has been active in many volunteer activities and served or serves on numerous boards, including six current nonprofit boards, two of which focus on independent living for persons with disabilities. And recently, he decided to run for city council again. So, very exciting.
And it's his birthday. Happy birthday.
Annette Januzzi Wick is a writer, teacher, and community connector. Her Italian roots and the combination of small-town upbringing and urban living in Ohio inform her unique perspective on writing and life. She believes creating links, rooting people to place through words and work, will bring us closer to the core of humanity. Her award-winning books and writings span across arts groups, women's studies, memory care homes, city councils, and editorial opinion pieces. And I believe, uh, they are planning to start off with an exercise from Annette.
I'm gonna speak first and then I'll have you, um, bring that up, okay?
Alright.
Okay. Well, thank you all for being here today. I appreciate, um, you showing up tonight. I appreciate partnering with, um, one of our esteemed former council persons and probably soon-to-be future council person. So, um, as you heard in my, um, in the bio, I'm an author, I'm a freelance writer. I teach classes on my own with, with partners like Women Writing, um, and with partners, um, like Women Writing for a Change and the Alzheimer's Association. I work as a professional facilitator and writing coach as well, too. So, um, I'm going to structure the evening, um, somewhat in the way I might structure a workshop. And I'll walk you through that in a minute, but first, I wanted to talk about maybe the inspiration behind this, uh, Finding Your Voice. Last summer during the cities, or this past summer during the city's budget negotiations, um, things got a little tense. Um, there was a lot of foul language that arose and even some of our council persons were really not quite prepared for that particular moment. It seemed like there was cause for people to take a break or take a breath and, um, that never happened. So, later on, I wound up reading or writing to Chris Seelbach, who's the Chair of the Equity, Inclusion, and Arts Committee. And, um, I'm gonna read portions of this email. Imagine if our city council meetings or public input sessions started with a Langston Hughes poem or something written by Cincinnati's poet laureate Manuel Edes. Or what if council members participate in a mindful moment prior to legislating in the same way this program is facilitated to students in our public schools? The tone of our city council public sessions and council meetings continued to erode. We have resources based in the city designed to help diffuse much of the current agitation and help those who want and need a voice to turn their passions into something good. Language can be healing. Mindfulness is meant to help focus our intentions. Uh, we need both at City Hall right now. So, Chris Seelbach took me up on the offer and late summer, he contacted Manuel Edes and had him read some of his poems before, um, the Equity Arts and Inclusion meeting. And then next month, I read a poem and it's my understanding that this is still going on. And when I personally experienced that in council chambers, I've read before in council chambers, usually I'm, I'm angry about something. But there's definitely a shift in the tone, there's a shift in the energy. And, um, I think people were filled with gratitude that they could just pause for a minute, minute before launching into the work that they were there to do. So, um, I thought we would start the evening off by doing something similar. And we're gonna read a poem, I'm gonna read a poem and then we're gonna do a little fast write. So, um, if you wanna make sure you have pen and paper handy and it's only gonna be five minutes, nobody's gonna be graded on this, but, um, I think Hillie's gonna bring the poem up to the screen for everyone to read. Or I'll read it and you can follow along. Thank you. So, this is a poem by Joy, Joy Harjo. She's a Native American poet. Um, she's been the, uh, poet laureate of the United States for three terms now. Um, she's the incumbent, incumbent poet laureate, too. So, um, right now, she's the only incumbent who's going back into office. Um, and so I'm gonna read this poem. "The world begins at a kitchen table. No matter what, we must eat to live. The gifts of earth are brought and prepared, set on the table. So it has been since creation and it will go on. We chase chickens or dogs away from it, babies teeth at the corners. They scrape their knees under it. It is here that children are given instructions on what it means to be human. We must make men at, we, we make men at it, we make women. At this table, we gossip, recall enemies, and the ghosts of lovers. Our dreams drink coffee with us as they put their arms around our children. They laugh with us at our poor, falling-down selves and as we put ourselves back together once again at the table. This table has been a house in the rain, an umbrella in the sun. Wars have begun and ended at this table. It is a place to hide in the shadow of terror, a place to celebrate the terrible victory. We have given birth on this table and have prepared our parents for burial here. At this table, we sing with joy, with sorrow. We pray of suffering and remorse. We give thanks. Perhaps the world will end at the kitchen table while we are laughing and crying, eating of the sweet, the last sweet bite." I've read that poem how many times? It's amazing how many times I always just, um, fumble, fumble over it a little bit. So, um, we are going to, let's see if I can go back to my... So, has everybody got pen and paper handy? And we're gonna do a fast write for just a few minutes. I'll set a timer. And a fast write is really just simply the process of writing to a prompt. And, um, you put down whatever comes to mind. It could be a list. It could be, um, just snippets of thoughts or emotions. Or sometimes it comes out in complete sentences. Um, the only requirement is that you just keep the pen moving and the idea is to just bring up maybe things that you haven't even thought about. So, the prompt, um, is that I'd like you to take this concept of "The world begins at the kitchen table" and write to one of the lines in the poem. Um, or use the first line as a starter. "The world begins at the kitchen table," or tailor it to this particular session because we're talking about, um, the city. "The city begins at the kitchen table." Or think of where the world begins for you. I'm going to set a timer for four minutes and, um, and then maybe we'll have a chance to share at the end of this session because we're gonna do another little bit of writing. But I'll set a timer and then I'll let you know when we're done. Does anybody have any questions? Okay. So, we're gonna have four minutes of quiet time as we record this, so somebody can scrub this later.
And, and have a hook. Have something that's gonna grab them. Then, write your three paragraphs going substantively into each of your three points. And then finally, close with a closing paragraph that tells them what you just told them more extensively in the essay. And bring that hook from the first paragraph back in. So, I guess the three points that I would make on this topic would be, know your audience. Know your purpose. And know when to shut up. That can be as powerful or more powerful than anything that you say out loud. Know your audience. Know who you're talking to. Are you talking to fellow council members? Trying to persuade them? Are you speaking with citizens at a meeting? Are you trying to persuade other elected officials, either at the county level or the state level, on a particular topic? Are you speaking to the cameras? We, we see too much of that, I think, at city council meetings now. I never got it for the first two years I was on council when people wouldn't make eye contact with me when I was up on the dais with them. They were always looking out into the distance and I couldn't figure it out. Finally, I realized they knew where the cameras were in the corners of the room and they were speaking to the cameras. Others, if, if you're, if you're speaking in a crowd during the, the, the summer, the, the unrest that happens, the, the tone that you take, the, the substance that you say can have a profound effect on where that, where that crowd goes and, and how it responds. And then finally, there's a, there's a whole nother category. And for those of you that, that wanna go on and run for city council someday, it's, it's earned media, as they call it. The, the professional media folks. Whether that's television, radio, print, and, and really with print, you can break it into the newspapers that are trying to get the story out the next day or now, instantaneously on, on the internet. Or a more thoughtful piece that's in a magazine or, or a, a weekly kind of, of thing. And you, and you have to recognize that you may speak with the interviewer for an hour. If it's a, if it's a television person. And you're lucky if they take two sentences of what you said and use it in the story. They, they will have spent the whole day on their story. They've got six hours of video. And their producers told them they've got a minute and a half piece on the evening news. So, you really have to know who it is you're speaking to and tailor what, the way you're speaking to who it is you're speaking to. And you also have to know the why of, of why is it that you're making this speech? We, when I was on council, we knew some council members that liked to speak from the dais just, I think, to hear their own voices. They weren't trying to persuade their fellow council members. They weren't even speaking to the cameras. They had their speech that maybe someone on their staff wrote for them. And by God, they were gonna get through it. And if they got interrupted, they went back and they found the place where they had stopped reading from and they picked right up reading again. There was no continuity, no flow to it. There was no sense of purpose. Is it to educate or explain a position? You, you're going to speak in a different way if, if that's what you're trying to do as opposed to persuade, perhaps. If you're trying to fire people up, you're gonna speak in a different way than if you're trying to persuade, perhaps, people that don't agree with you. And then the how, as we talked about. Try to keep it very brief to, to three points. I've found that most people's attention spans, at least most public officials' attention spans, don't go beyond those three points. I'll use as an example, you know, I did a quick write when I was on the dais when we were discussing, a rezoning for Children's Hospital in Avondale. And they were going to be building a 750 mil, they are building or have built a $750 million critical care tower where it will be state-of-the-art, it will be best in the world. And they weren't, they're one of the few people building in this county that hasn't asked the city for money to build. All they needed was a street to be slightly moved and they were gonna pay, pay to move the street. And they needed a zone change. And Children's Hospital, if you know them, have been very good civic partners. They had already agreed to give $10 million to the Avondale community over a decade. They, participate in that community. They, I think they run three clinics for the Avondale community. And people were trying to hold up this project. And so I didn't take my own advice and calmly draft out my thoughts and response. I, I was pretty fired up. But I did jot down some notes, a quick write, if you will. And as it turned out, I ended up really doing what I had said to do. Make my three points, have my hook. My hook was that building this tower is going to save children's lives, babies' lives. Not building this tower will cause children to die. That's a pretty powerful statement. And then I brought in my legal background and my knowledge of zoning law. And, and I made three points with it. I, I made the point that it was illegal to hold up a zoning in exchange for more money, extracting more money in order to rezone. That given that this was a children's hospital that was gonna save lives, that was immoral. And quite frankly, it was unconscionable to do it. And once I got those three points out, I simply closed and said, "Do the right thing and save, help save babies' lives." And I shut up. It was probably the most powerful speech that I gave in the four years that I was on council. And I would like to think that it did change some minds. Too often on council, you don't get that opportunity. People already come in, they've had their meetings or they've had their staff have their meetings. And they know which way they're gonna vote and they know what they're getting out of this. In exchange for their vote on this project, they're gonna get another And they know which way they're gonna vote and they know what they're getting out of this in exchange for their vote on this project, they're gonna get another vote. For another project. I, I didn't play those games, I wanna, can tell you. We, we, we didn't, we didn't do that. But all too often, I came in and I thought I was making great arguments, I was gonna persuade people. To, to go with a balanced budget, even though there were all these wonderful things that people wanted to do. We didn't have the money to do all of them. But it didn't matter because. The Budget and Finance Chair at the time had. Gone around and asked everybody what their one project was that they wanted. And they added it all in and it was a laundry list of. Pet projects for people. Hilly, has anybody, uh? Jumped in with any chat questions or anything yet? Jack's got something.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Jack.
Well, I have two, but I'll, I'll, I'll ask one and see, you know, if it's any good, and then we can go on to the second one. Um, so you talked about the Children's Hospital, um, project, and I thought that was an interesting point. I don't know everything about how that went down, but I know that it was met with mixed reviews in the community, there were some who were. Strongly for it, there were those who were against it and, and. I could probably off the back of my hand sort of make arguments both sides. What's the right amount of listening? When?
That, that project went through about three years of community engagement. They. Children's Hospital actually hired someone. To work full-time. On community engagement with the Avondale community. When people say. There's not enough community engagement, or there's no community engagement. Sometimes that's true. And there were many examples of that when I was on city council where. I would literally find out about a project on Friday afternoon that I was supposed to vote on on Monday afternoon. And it is important to have. Community engagement, public engagement on a project. This particular project was not that, that case. The, the voices in the Avondale community that were. Saying there wasn't enough public engagement. Came back at that same meeting and said. If you will give us another $15 million. We'll consider that enough community engagement. So it really wasn't about. Community engagement.
Right, you're saying, you're saying in that case. In that case, it was about extracting, like here's a, a pretty done deal, we, you know, you can extract our vote with, with this extra stuff and, and. You know, I guess I'm not even saying whether that was, money was spent wisely around there. But you're saying that in, in this case, there was a, there was a process where listening was intentionally built into it. That, that it went through a very public process where there was input. Um, and so there is a point, I, I'm reading between the lines, but there's a point in your mind where you've done the engagement piece, you've done due diligence. And here's the right decision. Thank you for your time and we move forward.
At some point, you're. One of my first decisions on, well, my very first decision on city council. Was the decision to move forward with the streetcar. After campaigning in favor of this first car in 2009 and 2011. I campaigned against the streetcar in 2013. Because the city hadn't made the case, they were still using. Data from 2005 to justify the case for the streetcar. When you looked on, on the city's website, they had a, they had an economic study from 2005. That didn't justify. The spending of that much money, now after. I was elected. We had an outside accountant come in at a cost of $250,000 if I recall correctly. To the city. To do a, a quick dive to see what it would cost to stop the project. And the high side between what we had already spent, which was $36 million. And what it could cost to stop the project. It would have been $80 million to stop the project, plus we would have had to give back the $42 million. That we had from the federal government. So if my math skills are correct, that was $122 million that we had sunk in the project at that point. And the entire project was supposed to cost 135 million. So we could be saddled with the debt and have nothing. Have, have another example of our subway that goes underneath Central Parkway that never, never ran. Or for an additional 13 million. We could have an operating streetcar, now it, it's not been as successful as we would. Want it to be. But. That was an example of, I listened. To people. I did the deep data dive. To look at the numbers. And I was persuaded to change my mind. The easiest thing for me to do. Would have been to stick with my no vote. Because I had already upset all the, all of the streetcar supporters when I didn't support it during the election. I had always said, I thought during my four years on council, I would make everybody in the city mad at me at one point or another. And I, I think I did it in the first two weeks that I was on council, so. My job was done, um. But, but that engagement was an interesting engagement because. It was different from the prior council from before I got on where they used to have. A half an hour of public engagement before. Regular council meetings and when that half hour was up. It was up and if, if there were more citizens that wanted to speak, too bad, you didn't get the opportunity to do that. You had to get there early enough to get your card in to get to speak during the half hour or you didn't speak. The council that I was on, we, we took every public comment. And, and I think that's been the case with this one as well, Jack, that. You know, with, with one notable exception of, of a budget and finance meeting. If there's 150 people there to. To speak. Everybody gets their two minutes, and I guess that's the other. Comment that I would make about, you know, we've talked about who are you talking to? Why are you talking? How are you gonna do it? The when. Are you? A member of the public that's trying to persuade? City council to take that action or refrain from an action? Well, you've got two minutes to make your point. You thought four minutes was, was, was fast on a quick write. Two minutes. And especially if you're not familiar with speaking. In the public. Venue. That's a very difficult task. And.
You answered my first question, I saw there was a couple of questions in the, the comments, so we'll come back if.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Hilly, if, did you pick another good one?
Sure, okay, so we have a question from Mark that says. To Kevin, you were elected with a voice that said the charter needed to be reformed, you used your voice. To establish a charter reform task force that spent thousands of hours working on reform plans. However, the mayor was successfully. Was successfully able to silence your voice and stifle the needed reforms, what did you learn from this experience on how to prevent losing your voice?
I learned that it could be a very frustrating. Task, um. For those of you that don't know, in order to get. A charter amendment to the ballot. To be voted on by the people, and that's the only way the charter can be changed is by a vote of the people. You, there, there's two ways to do it under the Ohio Constitution. One is to have two-thirds of the. Elected legislative body. Agreed to put the charter change on the ballot. So for Cincinnati, that would have been six of nine voters. Six of nine council members. The other way is to get 10%. Of. The P, of the, of the voters from the last. Municipal election. To sign a petition to get that on the ballot. Where, where I failed, I think, was. A, a, and it was interesting because one, one of the things that I failed when I was trying to do the charter reform. Was something that, that I thought was a very simple change. Which was to allow for executive session. For those items that are allowed to have executive session under. State law, so if we were discussing a real estate project, for example. We could do that in executive session, so we, it wouldn't be. Slammed down on us at the last minute, we could have. Effective time to review that. That plan, or. Another example. Reviewing the city manager's performance. The only legal way before the charter change to do that. Was to do that in open session, that is not conducive. To. One, open and honest criticism. But two. I, i- it turns into a farce. If you're trying to, to really give your chief executive officer constructive criticism. Because it becomes speech-making and it becomes talking, you're not really talking to the city manager anymore. You're talking to cable television. So. Executive session was a good thing, the, the, the responses I got back. Were that, oh, we're trying to have secret government, and it's like, no, every other government. Body. Has this for very limited purposes, and as it turns out. People were meeting secretly. On council about things that, that aren't appropriate topics. Were. Executive session. I'll vote for your $50,000 earmark if you'll vote for my $40,000 earmark. Some of the same people that were doing that kind of thing were the people that were. Saying we can't have secret government. Here, and I'm gonna vote against executive session. Well, it turns out as soon as I got off council. Some of the people that voted against. That charter amendment. Put it back up for, for, for another vote and it passed overwhelmingly by the citizenry. So I think one of the things that I would do a better job of. Mark would be. Making sure that either we had. Buy-in from. Both political parties for the charter change. All three political parties. The Charter Committee, the Republican Party and the Democratic Party. So that there, thereby you're likely to get the six of nine. And if you're not like, if you don't get the six of nine, but they really support it. It's gonna be a lot easier to get that 10%. Of the electorate to sign a petition, it's really difficult. To get 10%. Unless you're, unless you've got somebody with a lot of money. That's willing to pay people to get signatures. It's very difficult. It's difficult, if you're running for council. You have to get 500 signatures of registered voters. It's difficult to get 500 signatures. Much less 6,000. And oh, by the way, you can't submit them partially. You only get to submit them all at once. And so if you don't have enough valid signatures, you have to start over from scratch. So. I was very frustrated. By the mayor's silencing of my voice, I think you, you. Said it correctly, it was a learning lesson in politics for me, I. I always said in one of my campaign slogans was that I'm not a politician. And that I didn't run as a politician. I'm a public servant. I got an education in what being a politician was. And I felt very bad for all of the citizens that spent all of that time. Working on the charter reforms and. When people have been now this year. With, with the issues that have come up this year on council. And they're saying we need to, we need to do a deep dive into the charter and, and reform it. All they have to do is dust off. The 2014 findings of the Charter Reform Committee. Many of those issues that they're trying to figure out a way of addressing. Were addressed in that. In that proposal. So to the extent that there need to be charter changes, and I do think. There are some. There are also cases where we were gonna make charter changes. That. I found workarounds during my time on council. So, for example. One of the, and, and I'm paraphrasing here because my mind doesn't go back to 2014, I can't rewind that far that quickly. Uh, one of the charter reform changes was. To require the mayor. To place an item that was properly. Put before the clerk by someone on council. On the agenda within two weeks or two regular meetings of its submission. Because the prior mayor, Mayor Mallory. And this mayor, Mayor Cranley, had used. A sentence that was in the charter that had been in the charter. Since the twenties. That said, the mayor shall set the agenda for council. They had used that sentence to say. We don't have to put anything on the agenda if we don't want to. And so the charter change was. We're gonna make you do it. Well, there was one, one motion or, or one proposed ordinance, I, and I don't even remember what it was at this point. But I. Felt strongly enough about it that I was prepared to sue the mayor. If he didn't put it on the agenda. And I went to our city solicitor and I said, okay. I need you to represent me in my official capacity as a city council member to sue the mayor. In his official capacity as the mayor, and you also represent the mayor. It's one of the. Quandaries, one of the unsolvable riddles that we have is. You know, if, if the solicitor's office were a law firm, they would be disqualified from representing either side. The answer I got from the solicitor's office was. The answer I got from the solicitor's office was, Kevin, we can't sue the mayor. I said, well, I don't wanna sue the solicitor and the mayor, so I talked to a friend that was a lawyer that liked to sue the city. And, and he said, yeah, I think you've got a case. I then went down to the mayor's office and I said, John, I'm prepared to engage counsel and file a lawsuit if this agenda item doesn't get placed before council. It was on the next, oh, Kevin, I never meant for that not to go on. And it was on the next, next day. So oftentimes there are workarounds, and that's, you, you know, you solve the problem. You know, it's a perfect time, you know, if, if that didn't work, using my time on the dais to call it out, that, you know, I've had, and, and I had to do that one time when a committee chair buried one of my motions. I was seeking to enforce an agreement that, that a private business owner had made with the city to pay back some money that she had borrowed and I had really just taken the motion. I, all of the language in the motion was taken from the, the agreements that, that the parties had signed. But it wasn't politically palatable to go after this person. And so they took my motion and they, they buried it for about three months, and I had to continually bring it up in the committee meeting and in council meetings and basically embarrass the committee chair into bringing it forward. Now, it, it, the motion ended up not passing. It was one of many times, I think, that, that the votes were eight to one, and I was the one. I became quite proud of my the, the business courier, Chris Wetterick, gave me the nickname of eight to one Flynn, so. But that was finding my voice. I was not going to vote for something that I didn't agree with simply because it was gonna pass. And because of that, I never really had any difficulty defending any of my votes. Cause I knew why I had voted for something.
Kevin, thank you. I'm gonna interrupt you right there and, um, ask Annette a question, which I actually put in the chat. Um, but then I think she has an exercise for us. Um, and then I see other questions, and after we get to Annette's presentation, we can come back if there's still time. Um, so, Annette, in addition to helping to remind elected officials to breathe, how do you recommend that elected officials can use writing to refine their own voices and communicate as public officials to their constituents? You're muted, I think.
You're muted, Annette.
There we go. Um, thanks, Awana, for the question. Um, maybe that'll help kinda launch me into, um, unlike Kevin, who came with three bullet points, um, I'm a storyteller. So I came with a, a little bit more of a, a presentation story, if you all don't mind um, listening in, and maybe some of that question will be answered in, in what I'm about to share. So um, thought I'd launch, start by, um, sharing that years ago, I heard this interview with Studs Terkel. And for those of you that don't know, he's, he's long since deceased, but he's a veteran journalist and writer. Um, he wrote a groundbreaking book, um, that was the oral history about the Great Depression. Um, but he also wrote this book called Working. People talk about what they do all day and how they feel about what they do. That was actually the title, which was pretty cool. So anyhow, he starts telling this story in, in the midst of this interview. He's at, um, you know, a public housing, and he's interviewing this woman. This woman has all these kids running around um, behind her, and he's got a tape recorder. So he's talking to her about her work, her work of being a mom um, and whatever other work she was doing. And at the end, the kids come up and they're like, what is that? They wanted to know what, how did the tape recorder work? And, and what, what were they gonna hear on that? Um, so he said, alright, kids, you know what? If you all just be quiet, I'm gonna play this back so that you can hear your mother talk. And when he got done playing, the woman was sobbing because she heard her voice for the first time. She said, oh my God, I never knew I felt that way before. And that's always stuck with me when I have been working in my writing workshops. I, I, um, a lot of the work I do is in the community and a lot of outreach circles. I work with the dementia community caregivers. I've worked with Starfire. I've worked with City Gospel Mission. Um, so it, it's a pretty diverse group of organizations that I've worked with. And a lot of my students have had that same sort of feeling. I never knew I felt that way before until I heard it back in my own words. And the point is that we all think in different ways, and people need to be listened to in a variety of formats. So some people might do best as they write, some might be better speakers, some will not even know what they're saying until it's played back for them. Um, and some, of course, in this day and age, will use social media, um, which has also been, as much as we think it's a bad thing, it's, it's also been instructive in helping a lot of people find their voice and even their public voice. There's a lot of politicians, as you all know, that, um, know how to use social media constructively. And, um, I'll just point out AOC, and everybody knows who she is, and regardless of what side you fall on her politics, um, she knows how to use that to communicate in her voice um, the point that she wants to get across. Um, so before I, again, before I get to some of Awana's question, um, I wanted to walk you through a little bit of my journey um, of finding my voice and how it kind of went from a personal voice to a public voice. Um, in nineteen, I'm gonna share my age right now, nineteen ninety-six, I was thirty years old. And, um, my husband had just been diagnosed with acute lymphocytic leukemia. It's a cancer of the bone marrow. We had a one-year-old son, and we lived in Oregon. We were three thousand miles away from our families that were back here in Ohio. Um, he was, he had been young and healthy at the time, my husband, but a year, um, and he went through a year's worth of treatment, and he got into remission. Um, so we moved back to Cincinnati closer to family, but then his cancer relapsed, relapsed. So we started learning more about, um, bone marrow transplants, which required donations. Now, most people don't know about bone marrow transplants. We, we might know a little bit more now than we knew this was nineteen ninety-nine at that point in time. But we didn't know anything. And so I was seated at his bedside. Um, I was afraid. I was mad, and I got tired of people asking me, what could they do for us? Because short of curing cancer, there really wasn't much that anybody could do, including myself. And the only thing I could control was whatever I might put on the page. And so at that point, I had taken the caring around, uh, just a legal pad with me, and I started writing what became an op-ed, and it was a plea for bone marrow donations. Um, people didn't know that you could donate your marrow in the same way you can become a, of, just a, a blood donor. Um, now, it's a little bit more extensive, once you're accepted, once a match is found, et cetera, et cetera. But it really just involves donating a vial of blood um, so that they can match it, and you go into a, a database, and, and you hope to get called at some point in time so that you can help people um, recover from their cancer. But I'm gonna read just a, kind of the closing piece about this um, that I was able to find on newspapers dot com, which is amazing. Um, "For the many friends who ask, can we do this for Devon? I say, no. Do it because you can save a life, not because you may be a million-to-one match for Devon, but because you may be a one-to-one match for someone else in need. Call your local blood bank and tell them you would like to help, then follow through on your commitment for a lifetime. One never knows when one will face mortality as we have. We've come to terms with our destiny, or, but by nature, we're still afraid not to die. But if we lose the battle with leukemia and still do nothing, then nothing will change, or will it?" So my husband went ahead with his transplant, and, um, a year later, he passed away. And all the journals and diaries and emails we wrote, um, I wrote letters home to my mom during his transplant because we were back in Seattle at that point. And they all became the basis for one of my memoirs called I'll Be in the Car. But mostly, it was that one-page op-ed in which I learned that, um, how being the voice for somebody else led me or could lead me to finding my own. Um, now, fast forward about ten years, I remarried, I became a stepmother to three teenage daughters, along with my son. My voice kinda went away a little bit at that point in time. But I also had a mother who had started her long slide into dementia. Now, she lived in Cleveland with my dad, and I was living here in Cincinnati. And I wanted to know how I could educate myself more about her condition. So I did what I knew how to do. As a writing teacher, I thought, I'm gonna develop a series of workshops for people who experience mild to moderate dementia. And then I started proposing them to anybody who might listen, including the Alzheimer's Association, who told me, no, thank you. Um, and as an aside, of course, fifteen years later, I've taught a lot of writing workshops for them. Um, but the lessons from my husband's caregiving, my caregiving experience with my husband were percolating in the back of my head. And I knew I wanted to help others tap into whatever voice they had left in this world. And so I found the Alois Alzheimer Center in Green Hills, who readily accepted my proposal. And, um, and I offered that workshop for them for three years. I worked with their residents um, to create safe spaces, even if it was just for trying to generate snippets of long-lost memories, um, immerse them in baseball and beaches. We, um, we talked about school, we talked about, um, families and holidays. And, and some of those memories stayed lodged inside, and they could be tapped into. Um, but we only had to ask and create that space and give them the time to let it rise to the surface. Um, and I learned that whatever I was doing for the residents of that community, I was also doing for my mother. Um, being, again, being the voice for somebody else continued to lead me down the path to my own. And when my parents moved here to Cincinnati, my father died, and I became the advocate for my mother. Um, that was its own sort of, um, reckoning, if you will. And I was able to use all the time I had put in at the Alois Alzheimer Center, lessons learned there on caring for her. Um, I started another blog. Of course, this is what writers do. We start blogs whenever we have, like, new experiences, or we write, we write memoirs. And, um, I started telling the stories about my mother. And I wanted caregivers to see her as a person with a life and not a person without a memory. And we started creating these family-like atmospheres for our loved ones to exist in. And my readers and followers started responding with their own version of these stories. If I told a story about when my mom swallowed soap and landed in the hospital, somebody else had another story. Um, if I told the story about, um, my mother, she was always yelling at people, and she always liked to yell at me about my hair. Um, but somebody else always had another story about that. So we were starting to create a lot of, um, connections around our losses, and we were building community in the process. My mom died six years after her move. And she and I shared many beautiful moments, and I eventually put all of that into a book. Um, that I'm gonna explain in a little bit. But I wanna talk a little bit about, um, you know, kind of the, the why Kevin mentioned, the purpose. Um, author Michael Pollan, who wrote The Omnivore's Dilemma and Indefensive Food, and I know he's got one now about, um, psychedelics and drugs and everything. Um, but he said, every writer has to figure out, what is their essential question? What is at the heart of their work? Um, for some people, it's going to be the streetcar. It might be transportation. For some people, it's going to be the charter. For some people, it's going to be affordable housing, right? So what, what is at the heart of your work? And then try to figure out how, how can you look at that from all these different perspectives, right? How do you, how do you give that issue or whatever is at the heart of it dimension and life? Um, so there's always gonna be this through line in the, uh, manner, you know, whatever it is you happen to be passionate about. Um, you know, like Kevin's essential question seems like, you know, how can he be the best public servant? He didn't wanna be a politician. He wanted to be the best public servant for our, um, for our city of Cincinnati. Um, and I will say that, like, after writing two memoirs about death, um, dementia and another death, you know, my questions all pointed back to loss. I started seeing everything through that particular lens. I've started seeing what I cared about, what I lost, the connections that had been lost. And, uh, Hilly read this earlier, but on my bio and on my website, it says, "Creating links, rooting people to place through words and work, bringing us closer to the core of humanity." I'm always trying to rebuild or redefine the lost links that we have in our life. So, fast forward to two thousand and twelve, um, while I'm been caregiving for my mom, my second husband and I, we buy a home in the city in Over the Rhine. Um, I like to call it the Petri dish of the city, um, because no other neighborhood has within its boundaries all the art and the history and the architecture, um, the social services, um, the gentrification, the renovation, and the constant tension over the sense of who actually owns over the Rhine. Um, and I always think so many life experiences kinda take place in this neighborhood in the very public eye. So that also began a new chapter with my writing. And, um, in these new surroundings, I felt like my writing took on a different sort of bent. It was stronger. Maybe it was more angry, or I was at least agitated about buildings being demolished, or people experiencing homelessness. Or, in particular, um, the question I got all the time, so we moved from the suburbs, and the question I got all the time was, oh, that's cool, so you moved to Over the Rhine, but where do you shop for groceries? Um, there's no Sam's Club here. There's no Costco. Um, we didn't have the beautiful, you know, Over the Rhine Kroger that we have now. We had the Kroger on Vine. And we had Finley Market, and I had a car. So my options were endless. But I was so tired of people asking me, where do you shop for groceries? That I went on a rampage one day, and I decided, okay, I'm just gonna put this all into, um, some op-ed. And I'm just gonna read a little bit from my learnings from that. "Looking inside my own pantry stores, I learned a lesson about how much I spend. While in Kroger, a mother pulled down a fifty-nine cent can of generic tomato paste as I reached for the name brand Hunts. What an uncomfortable position to be in. Not for her, but me. I didn't need Hunts. Hunts was a brand, that's all. I became more intentional when shopping alongside someone who was stretching hi- his or her last five-dollar bill or utilizing SNAP benefits. During my last outing, I purchased butter and milk to make fudge. A woman behind me joked, A woman behind me joked, run out of staples, right? I stood speechless as I realized the privilege of buying butter and milk to melt into fudge. So I had those kinds of pieces that I was writing and then I started reacting to so many of our news headlines. And I was trying to, in a way, I guess I was writing to a lot of my friends who still lived out in the suburbs and I was trying to tell them, this is what it's like here in the city. This is what's what it's like for people who um, these are the resources they've been given. Nobody decided that they were going to put a brand new Costco right down the street for everybody to go shop at. So a lot of my my writing became more and more public. I wrote a piece about Glanera Bates, um if any of you remember her, boy, this went goes back like two thousand and fifteen. She was, I believe, a two or three year old toddler who was um killed by her father. And he had swung her at the wall the night before her death. Um, and she only weighed like thirteen pounds at the time of her death. And I I distinctly remember the the only reaction that the county prosecutor gave at the time was that some adults should not raise kids. And I felt like, wow, wow, that's that's cruel because, and I wrote here, we shouldn't be horrified. These children want to be in their parents' homes where they're comfortable and away from the watchful eyes of strangers. We should be horrified that laws require agencies, lawyers and the court system to return the children to the home. Even the county prosecutor at his wit's end drew the only conclusion available. Some adults should not raise kids. We should be horrified that with that level of education and experience, that was the only solution he proposed. So I started getting a little gutsier, I guess, um maybe a little angrier at every turn. And so I I wanted to know, like, what were we missing out as a city? What what went missing when we didn't care? I just, Barbara Streisand in a nineteen ninety five talk at the JFK School of Government at Harvard said, I like being involved, the most satisfying feelings come from things outside myself. People from any walk of life, when they stand up for convictions, can do almost anything to stop wars, end injustices and defeat entrenched powers. She was talking about the artist as an activist. And those words really just continued to speak for me. So I kept sharing my words, my opinions. I could become this activist if I stayed committed to my writings. So in January of two thousand and seventeen, following the presidential election, I supported Yvette Simpson as a mayoral candidate. And she was talking about the fifty two neighborhoods of Cincinnati. Now I'm from Cleveland and I've been in and out of Cincinnati a couple of times. And um she had this grand plan about how each neighborhood would be categorized as like green, like red, yellow or green in terms of the kind of services that the city would provide to them. And some neighborhoods were green because they really didn't need a lot of help, right? High Park, um some neighborhoods were were yellow because there were certain services that maybe the city could focus on. And some were red because there were a lot of services that the city needed to focus on. So eventually I decided I didn't know these neighborhoods that she was talking about. So I needed to get out and learn more about these fifty two neighborhoods. And um I took it upon myself to just say, okay, I'm going to just walk one every week and I'm going to start blogging about them so that I can see where the boundaries of the neighborhoods are and how we created artificial divisions that we're still reeling from today. I had to, I don't know how many people I had to explain to that Norwood was not a city neighborhood, um neither was Gulf Manor. There were some neighborhoods that I thought were cities of um or neighborhoods of the city of Cincinnati and they weren't. So I started writing about each of these neighborhoods and the subject matter was part history, part geography. Sometimes I wrote about food or restaurants or whatever, but they all focused on connection. So now the essential question I've been asking myself again and again after death and death were about connection and community and what happens when that's all lost. So I'm going to wrap up here a little bit with um just kind of some of my final public public voiced, public voices, I guess, if you will. My my mother died in two thousand and eighteen, my second book came out a year later in August of two thousand and nineteen. Um, it was called I'll Have Some of Yours, it was stories about cookies and caregiving. The essays were about memory loss, losing a parent and the time together. And that we didn't have the time to make up. And I was all set, I had book tours scheduled, I had um, I had a lot of speaking events. And uh just a month or so after my book came out to the general public, I was hit by a car. I was at the intersection of Fifth and Broadway and um I was I was mowed over by a car. So it was in my nature to write an op ed about what is it like to be hit by a car? And and what do we need to do about it? So I took that particular opportunity and um, you know, talking a little bit about like, how do we what do we put into our writing so that we can communicate the essentials of our why? But I wanted to add some facts into this. So I started with, I hadn't planned to be a number, but on October seventh, I became one of two hundred and eighty seven pedestrians in the city of Cincinnati involved in a crash during two thousand and nineteen. And then I went on to describe what happened and how I felt victimized because a lot of people like to victim blame anybody that happens to be in the and even if you're in the crosswalk with the crosswalk signal flashing in your favor, you will still get victimized. You're wearing black and it's dark out, you'll still get victimized because you shouldn't have been there, I don't know. But I went on to demand a little bit better of our policing efforts of traffic violations, supporting the Vision Zero of Cincinnati, um or following certain people on Twitter so that um we can have these broader conversations about pedestrians who are hit by a car. And then like everybody else, um life stopped after the pandemic because of the pandemic. Connections stop, communities stop. The one thing that didn't stop were our elections this year and I had the opportunity to write two more op eds um about my experience in working for why I volunteered to work the polls on Election Day because I was of the perfect demographic. I didn't have kids at home, I didn't have parents I was taking care of and I had a flexible work schedule. So why would I not volunteer? Um, and I was, I felt perfectly healthy other than the um, the battered kneecap and everything. And um so I signed up to be a poll worker and then went on to, um I write about the previous time and then I write about um actually the time that I spent there on duty. And then I'll read from this too, because there was a lot of um angst around absentee voting. The beauty in the delicate dance of absentee voting was not that the process enabled more people to vote by the convenience of mail, but workers on the ground were freed to cue up the soundtrack of soundtrack of democracy for voters who preferred to dance in person, like the man seated in front of me, someone who wasn't going to ride a bus bus to election headquarters five miles outside of the city. We were the faces they knew, they trusted us and followed our lead. And the op ed goes on to detail a scene where there's a woman who comes in who is actually illiterate. And that struck me and I I needed to make sure I included that story in my op ed because we spent nine million dollars in a rainy day fund for a uh football or a football or soccer stadium. But we saw people who are illiterate, sixty year old woman still illiterate, who lives in the city. And um if we can't address those issues, then um we have, we have bigger work to do. So I guess in closing, I just want to say um people mistake me sometimes for being political, does that sound familiar Kevin? Um, I don't consider myself political at all, I'm a service person. Um, and I've given service all my life and my writing has become an extension of that service. And on either side of the divide, you know, the political divide, I guess, my position still lands on the side of voice, whether it's for leukemia patients, residents with dementia, City Gospel Mission residents, Glanera Bates, people who grocery shop in the city, poll workers, my parents and all of you here today. Your public voice, um it's not always the one you speak with in front of hundreds or even the dozen or so that are here tonight. This is not really my public voice, my public voice is, it's more in my writings. It's in the stories that I tell that are beginnings and endings, the stories that connect and heal, and that's that's kind of where where I truly excel. But your voice, um wherever you share it in public or private, yours is going to be the one that you use to serve others and to connect with them and to advocate on their behalf. And most importantly, to let them know that you're there for them and that they're not alone in whatever situation that they're going through. So um, that's all I have and hopefully I answered the question that the one I had put forth at the beginning.
You did, there are a couple of more questions in the chat, so maybe we'll pose them for both of you. Let's see, I think uh the the ones that I got as private messages were directed to Annette, but I think they apply to to both of you. So what advice would you give to someone who is new to public life and is nervous about finding their public voice? And how should they stay consistent with it? Annette, do you want to take it first and then Kevin and then we'll wrap up right at eight thirty?
Sure.
Thanks.
Yeah, um. So the question was, can you repeat that one more time?
It is, what advice would you give to someone who is new to public life and is nervous about finding their public voice? And how do they stay consistent with it?
I would say as long as you know what you're going back to your essential question, your why, what is it you care about? You know, that that comes through more than anything else. Um, and I I mean, I still get nervous because this is something I'm passionate about, so um I don't always worry about the speaking aspect of it because it's like, I know I'm speaking from the heart. So being true to yourself is is of utmost importance. And second, um I think, you know, we have, we have writing, we have video capabilities. So um, I would say sharing whatever it is you plan to share in public with somebody else. I actually have a writing partner, I call her my writing wife, um that's kind of a little joke, my husband doesn't worry about it. And um it, we use each other to give, you know, one another feedback on our writing or if we're planning to give a speech. So find a partner, somebody who is going to be a compassionate listener, but can also be a constructive listener and keep practicing at it. I think that's important as much as anything else. And um for me, what I always found in the workshops that I created, and I think uh you know, Kevin talked about this at the beginning, but um listening, listening is such a key component. And I, when you're listening and you pick up on, um we have this practice that we called reback lines when when I'm facilitating writing classes and we read all of our writing back to one another. And um you kind of pick up on these certain words that people are sharing, or maybe it's a phrase or two. And um it's an opportunity to let them know that they've been heard if you can reuse those words, if you can share those words back, or if you incorporate them into your writing at some point in time too. So it's not always considered thievery, um writers aren't gonna get too worked up about copyright in that case. But um, but yeah, so I think stay true to, stay true to who you are and your passion and um and find a partner that you can bounce some things off of.
And I would just add that being nervous is okay. I still get nervous when I'm speaking in public. When I was running for office, I had my two minute speech and my three minute speech and my four minute speech when I was going to various community council meetings. And I took it with me like a security blanket. My hands don't work too well, so I I rarely have ever looked down at the the damn notes. But I took them with me everywhere I went, because I was always worried I was going to just be up there and just go blank. And that's a frightening thing. But the reality is, I I almost never go blank, I always go too long rather than rather than get blank. So get, that's, that's why I come back to those three points again. If if you can make sure you make those three points, whether you've got two minutes to speak or five minutes to speak, you can make those points. People will retain that. And honestly, if you're, as as Annette said, if you're true to yourself, if you're sincere, people are not going to punish you because you may stutter a little bit or or hem and haul over the words. One helpful hint that I would give to people, having seen people come to to counsel often, is don't read from your iPhone for your two minutes. Have your thoughts, know your thoughts well enough that you're hitting those points, you may write those points down and have them on an iPhone or have them on a piece of paper. But don't sit and and try and look at a little screen because you're nervous already. And then you're trying to look at a little mini screen and you're going to lose your place. And at that point, you've lost your audience. So I I think, you know, you have to use your voice, but but nervous nervous is good.
Yeah, even in the uh the nineteen ninety five talk, Barbara Streisand talk that I referenced, she she's totally nervous in this and she she has these just complete, oh my God, what am I doing up here? You know, just, and it's so fun to watch because you think she's just this diva and that she should know how to stand up in front of an audience. But um, you know, we're all just winging it at some point in time. So we just have to go on our best instincts and and um and presume goodwill on behalf of everybody else, even if there it really isn't.
Thank you both so much, this was really great. I think we learned a lot from both of you, thank you so much. I just want to let everybody know that uh our next session is going to be on January twenty first and it's going to be about the city's budget process. Kevin looks excited about that one.
There's a process?
I guess that's debatable. So thank you all and uh
Hilly, can I interrupt just real quick?
Absolutely.
Let's see, oh, I have, you know, I had the one last writing prompt, but I want to make sure that we're closing at eight thirty. And so I'm wondering if you could email that, the the second piece from Audrey Lord. And um I am open to giving my email address to anybody who wants to contact me. It's not directly on my website, so I'll just give it here and the, or I'll just leave it in the chat, I guess. There we go. Um, there we go. And if anybody has any more questions or they're curious about writing and using writing in terms of their public voice, I'd be happy to answer those too.
Great. Yeah, I will be sending an email um, shortly after the conclusion of this meeting tonight. And I can include your writing exercise in that email.
Yes, like homework.
Yeah, yeah.
And I really have, yeah, if anybody, I'd love to read whatever you have all written cuz I always find that instructive for me, so you're welcome to send that to me. And um, and I honestly, I just really appreciate it, so.
Yeah.
And I won't share it anywhere, it's all confidential, so.
I'm sure that people would love to participate in that. And like you wanna said, we do love homework at Action Tank, so. It's good. Um, do you guys have any other comments you'd like to share before we wrap up?
Thank you for the time. This was awesome.
Thank you all for, for coming to night school.
Yeah.
Thank you both.
Tomorrow morning, we get to find out if Kevin Flynn is appointed to a city council seat. So exciting.
I don't know anything, so.
I gotta thank you, man, I love you.
Will Christmas come early? Thank you all, good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Have a great night.
Happy birthday.
I'm gonna end it.
Okay.
Okay, bye.